Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the July twenty one, twenty twenty five, City of Kalispell Council Meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councillor Dowd.
Here.
Councillor Dahlman.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Hunter. Councillor Nunali.
Here.
Councillor Carlson.
Here.
Councillor Gabriel.
Here.
Councillor Graham.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your agenda, look for council approval is printed. Consent agenda. Mr. Nunali.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Gabriel. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Dowd.
Aye.
Councillor Dahlman.
Aye.
Councillor Fisher.
Aye.
Councillor Nunali.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Gabriel.
Aye.
Councillor Graham.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. No committee report this evening, so at this point in time, I'm going to open the meeting for public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening. If anyone from the public wishes to address the council on items not on the agenda, please step forward and give us the comments.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. My name is Gracie Stogsdell. I live at nine five seven Colorado Avenue. And I was here at your last public hearing, and some comments were made at the end that I would have liked to respond to. So I'm going to do that now. Give me one moment. So to start with, Councillor Hunter is not here, but he did make a comment that I would like to respond to. Quote, "In terms of the accusations of widespread fraud, this has been looked into extensively across the country. There's been a big deal made about it, and while there are some instances of individual cases, there's never been found any kind of widespread anything that would affect the outcome of a race." And for those of you who weren't here last time, I testified regarding election promotion funding with regards to the budget. And I didn't like your decision about mail-in ballots. But if you go back and watch my previous testimony, the word widespread did never, never came out of my mouth. I read to you from three articles about mail-in ballot fraud in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Colorado. And here is a list of more articles, the headlines of which I will read to you now, and I'm happy to provide this if you'd like to look at it later. NBC Boston, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, "Voter Fraud Investigation Underway After Video Allegedly Shows Woman Stealing Ballots From Lawrence Mailbox." And a follow-up article from the same news outlet, December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, "Two Lawrence Women Including Elected Official Charged With Voter Fraud." One of these women was a city councillor-elect, and they each faced sixteen charges of voter fraud in regard to the previous headline. CT Mirror, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, "Five Charged With Election Crimes Stemming From Twenty Twenty-Three Bridgeport Primary." This includes three Bridgeport City Council members and the vice chair of the city's Democratic Party, who was caught on surveillance footage dropping stacks of absentee ballots into a drop box at five AM. NBC New York, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, "More Voter Fraud-Related Charges Filed Against Patterson City Council President." This case has been ongoing for almost five years and involves the city council and his president and his wife, who were charged with stealing mail-in ballots, falsifying them, and then casting those ballots in an attempt to win the twenty twenty election for himself. The twenty twenty elections in Patterson were done entirely by mail due to COVID-nineteen. New Jersey Monitor, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, "Atlantic City's Former Council President Pleads Guilty To Ballot Fraud." This happened in twenty twenty-two, where this guy and others paid the people up to fifty dollars to act as messengers to collect the ballots and fraudulently fill them out without the voters' knowledge. New York Times, July tenth, twenty twenty, "Mail Carrier In West Virginia Pleads Guilty To Attempted Election Fraud." This time was a mail carrier in Pendleton County altering primary ballot requests from Democrat to Republican, which would have resulted in Democrat voters receiving Republican primary ballots. And the population of Pendleton County is less than sixty-one hundred. And this is just what I could find in an afternoon of research. Mail-in ballot fraud is a bipartisan issue. I'm not on either side. It's just bad. Councillor Graham, you mentioned the fact that not everyone in Kalispell is registered to vote, and that is true. I looked extensively online for the number of registered voters, and all I could come up with was Flathead County, not the city of Kalispell, but I'm sure you have that information available to you. What I do know is that only twenty-four percent, twenty-four percent of the population of Kalispell is under eighteen, which disqualifies them from voting. So you've got over twenty-five thousand people who are legally able to vote, a good number of which are actually registered to vote based on the overwhelming turnout from the Flathead in twenty twenty-four. So we can play the blame game, but less than three hundred people showing up to vote in an election is abysmal any which way you spin it. You also mentioned that the twenty twenty-three election was annulled and that people had to re-vote, and they didn't know which word to vote in, which is understandable. However, I said, as I said when you point fingers at someone, in this case, the county election department, for the mistake that they made, four fingers are pointing back at you. You guys should have taken responsibility for your constituents and corrected the information, promoted the re-vote, given them anything. I looked everywhere for your comments, including on the city of Kalispell's X page and Instagram. Nothing. Nothing. And I spoke on this with regard to mail-in voting. Quote, "You're telling them that they don't know where to go or who to vote for," close quote. That was in my testimony last time. And then, Councillor Graham, you proceeded to tell me exactly that, that voters don't know where to go, that they need the city council to swoop in and send them their ballots so they don't have to venture out into the big grown-up world and figure out which word they need to vote in. And Mayor Johnson, I very much appreciate your comments about the convenience of mail-in voting and our duty. I very much respect you for that comment, and we are aligned on this issue. But I also want to address something else, and I'll do this very quickly. Voter participation. Mail-in ballot, mail-in ballots promote what we know in the political world as voter detachment. People don't know who you are. They don't know what their city council does, or who you are as people. They don't know where their polling places are because they've never been. They don't know their state representatives, or their mayor, or their sheriff. They don't know. They will drive past a development on Highway two or Highway ninety-three and complain about it, and they don't know that you guys make these decisions, or that they could have had some kind of say in it. They don't know when you guys meet. Have to dig through fourteen pages on your website to try to find the date of this hearing. And I, I do this for a living, so I have that kind of time, but a lot of people don't, and a lot of people don't have the patience. They don't care. The proposed budget for this year is over a hundred and eighty million dollars, and I was the only person to speak on it last time. Your constituents should care. You have a duty to them to tell them about the issues, not just to make informed decisions on their behalf with the power that they give you, but also to tell them what's going on. Several of you spoke last week regarding an accessory casino permit, about not wanting to be a parent in government, but that's what you did with the mail-in ballot decision. You made that decision for them, and nobody knows about it. I know that because I have many friends and family who live in Kalispell, and none of them had any idea that you made that decision. They just check little boxes with an R or a D, and they submit their ballot, and they move on with their lives. There's more people here than there were last time. There were maybe ten last time. But where are the people in your wards? How many of them come here? How many of them know what you're going to talk about, how it daily affects them and their lives? Somebody has to take responsibility for informing the constituents and respecting them enough to actually take their advice and, and care for them as people because they gave you what you have. They give you this power to sit here and be city council members or mayor. You don't get that just from waving a magic wand. They voted for you because they believe that you have their best interests in mind. And one of those best interests is informing them and keeping them informed and respecting them enough to say you deserve this information, instead of saying, "We're going to make decisions in the dark and never tell you about it ever." And I get that some people like to be, that some people are apathetic about it, and that's fine, but a large majority of the people wants information. They just don't know how to get it from you. So the political machine in the Flathead is old and decrepit and quiet. Not anymore. You can expect a lot more sunlight from now on.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment?
I don't know if this is the right time for this or not. My name's Ron Albrecht. I live at ten seventy North, North Meridian, and I'm getting tired of making phone calls. The, I've lived there for seven years. Seven years I've had to complain about weeds and lawns totally unkept, and I'm getting excuses. We don't have a manager. We don't have any money. We got to wait till July one before we can send notices. Then it's August. Hell, then it's snow on the ground, and you can't see the weeds. The city should pass an ordinance if your lawn is left unkept. The city just sends somebody over, mows lawn, puts it on their taxes. It makes that problem go away pretty easy. Go down North Meridian, for an example, just to see some of the terrible, unkept homes, and I'm getting no help from the city or the county. The county used to try and help, but now they're saying their lawyer said, "Hey, it's a city problem. We can't do that anymore." So I'd really like some help on that to clean up the neighborhood. Speeders, how about getting some speed control on North Meridian? The cops are tired of me calling. I shouldn't have to be the speed control guy saying, "Hey, we got a racetrack over here." Either that or raise the speed limit to ninety miles an hour. The speed limit is totally uncontrolled in that area, and, and we need to get that fixed. Somebody's going to really get killed over there. And how about the sidewalks? Seven summers I've called to get my sidewalk repaired out there that's buckled. The sidewalk is adjacent to the city street, and for whatever reason, if you come down Meridian, I'm sure there's other places, but I just noticed North Meridian. The sidewalks are buckling by the driveways, and they need to be fixed. It's, it's a heck of a hazard. Somebody's going to get hurt over there unless you guys got really good insurance. I mean, it's a prime lawsuit right there. My sidewalks dropped this much, and I'm getting this here, oh, the manager quit, or we don't have money, or the contractors are too busy to get there. I said, "How about if I fix it?" "Oh, you know, you can't do that. Now you got to come down and get a permit and all kinds of..." The process is not working. You need to find solutions. We're creating more. Growth is wonderful if you can control what's already been allowed to grow in the county, and it has not been. It's rampant. There's no money. There's no cops. The drugs and crime is running rampant, and we keep adding by more and more subdivisions. And we do need housing, but the job market does not support the apartments that they're putting in. The apartments they put across from me on North Meridian were originally designed, in my understanding, for people with jobs to get help paying the rent. Great objective. Then they put in welfare people. Then they put a homeless shelter down the street. Now, a couple blocks from that, you've got a transit or, from when you're left out of jail to, to work. We're creating more and more problems. Have we doubled our police force in the last few years? I don't believe we have, but the population has more than doubled. And have we increased their salary? I don't believe we have, but can you buy a sixty, seventy thousand dollar house, I mean, four hundred and sixty thousand dollar house on a police salary? These people put their lives on the line every single day. I'm not a cop, and I really, but I'm just saying. They need to go home to a comfortable home and relax at the end of a day. And if can't provide a decent salary, that's why we're not getting cops and why they're leaving. But I did read in the paper, now I guess some people got, in the city, got raises. Well, if you get a raise for your job, it's a, it's a sign that you're doing a great job, and you deserve a raise. But with all these ongoing problems, I don't think anybody deserves a raise till we can control the problems and then support growth within the city. And then I get into snow removal. Because my sidewalk in all along North Meridian is adjacent to the streets, when they're plowing, I realize they got a lot of, a lot of territory to cover, but we can't push the snow off of those sidewalks back into what all the city has pushed up onto those streets. We can't do it. So every year I complain, and then the city comes over, and then they do bring their equipment and, and take care of the sidewalks, which is great. I mean, we're happy to help, but our little snow removal equipment can't handle everything that's being pushed over there. Invagrants. How about the vagrants people we got from the homeless shelter wandering up and down that street? The post office is closed now certain hours because of the homeless people going into the post office. Why should the, why should the people living there have to suffer for that? That's, we, we need help taking care of that. Or the apartment across from me, they're sitting outside on the, on the, whatever kind of boxes are out there, electrical boxes or telephone boxes or whatever. They all go out there and congregate and smoke right along the sidewalk. Well, then you got little kids running there. You got dogs scrapping everywhere. You got all those other problems associated with that. That should have been kept in the confines of the apartment complex that was built. My understanding was that's what it was supposed to have been, but I don't see that. And anyway, that's, not that they're complaints, they're concerns. And, and I, I would expect, I mean, it's not too much to expect to maintain what you have already approved before you approve anything else. That's not too much to ask. If we don't have enough cops, why keep getting people into the, stop it until we get more cops. If the cops aren't coming because of management, check the management. What's wrong with management? Is it because of salary? Then you need to become more competitive with salary to get qualified people. The turnover has to stop. It costs more money to have turnover than it does to, to pay well-qualified people. And that's for everybody. I mean, that's for everybody in the city. That's just generally. But when the average house cost is, what, half a million dollars, and you go down the street and you're working for fifteen, who can afford that? You know? And it, you, we're going to lose the people that are servicing, the people that have the money to live here. And if they don't have the people to service what they're here for, what, what's going to happen then? I mean, Montana's already California. We'll never get Montana back, never the way it was back in nineteen ninety when I moved here from eastern Montana. It's just gone. We have to stop the rapid change. We need to keep, this is Montana, friendly town, friendly people, help your neighbor, that sort of thing. But you have to address the issues that I've brought up tonight. The snow removal, the speeders, the weed and lawn control, the vagrants, the police calls. They're constantly at the place across from me in the apartment complex down the street. If, if that was what was created by the city, then the city should create, stop the problem. If you have to hire more cops, you have to do that. We, we can't have the, we can't have that. My, my place looks like a racetrack. They start up on top, north of me, and it's just a racetrack because they come down and make all the lights. They're doing, have to be doing sixty, seventy miles an hour down there. I call the cops, and they do what they can, but they can't always be there to catch what we need to. I've asked, can't we put up cameras? And I don't know the law on that. Like, some, some cities in the, in the United States have speed cameras and send tickets out. Why don't we do that? Why don't we hire a private force, private speed people? We used to have a speed control guys. They used to run around on their motorcycles for speeders. Then they got short of help, and then, then they couldn't do that. And I don't think we've ever put them back just to watch for speeders. They're so overworked. But anyway, I just, I don't want to ruin the community. I want to help it. I want to, I want it to be a safe place where people can walk and the kids can play, and everybody feels safe and stuff, but we're, we're long ways from that anymore. So I'm asking for your help and concern and, and address these before we expand much further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Councillor, members, Mayor. My name's Kyle Voitlander. I'm a candidate for District Three or Ward Three here in Kalispell for this election. If you have any questions, anyone can direct to my email, kyleformontana@gmail, or you can get ahold of me via my website, kyleformon, or, excuse me, kyleforkalispell.com, and I'd be happy to get in touch with you through there. I want to start off again to say thank you guys for your service, each and one of you. Those of you who are not running again, you know, thank you for serving our community and wish you well in your future endeavors. I was going to talk a little bit about the new master plan, but I guess that's next week. But for anyone who doesn't know, the City of Kalispell has to adopt a new master plan, and it's really important because they have to either adopt this plan or they take fifteen points from the state. That includes getting rid of off-street parking, high-density homes, additional dwelling units. The list goes on. The two people who spoke in front of me, the young gal, had a wonderful speech. I wish I could speak that well. And I agree with her. I, I think this mail-in voter, a hundred percent mail-in voter is, is absurd. People have a right to go in and vote in person, put their ballot directly into the elections box, right there at the elections department, down here at City Hall, the fairgrounds, wherever it may be. Her, I, I don't need to repeat her quotes, but they're a hundred percent true, and it's happening across America. And even though we are a somewhat small city, we're rather large in comparison to a lot of areas, and it's going to be a problem in the future. And it might not be today. It might not be tomorrow. It might be in five years from now, but it's going to be a problem. So I hope that we can reverse that decision before this election cycle goes out. But I'd like to address the gentleman that spoke before me on every, basically most of his topics, and I'd love to speak with him because I have answers to his, his questions and, and the laws and regulations that I've learned over the years. But we, we have a problem with speeding. We have a problem with our police force. We don't have enough, you know, personnel on the streets. I see police officers everywhere now. I haven't scoured the numbers or anything. But we got to figure out a solution because safety's, safety's a big issue. And, you know, we keep approving these subdivisions, which bring in, you know, supposedly thousands of dollars of tax revenue and bring in families and more homes because we need a solution to more homes. We don't have the personnel to keep up with it, and it's not police, it's not just police. It's Public Works. Susie, I'm sure you know that very well, and we can't keep the streets cleared quick enough in the winter. And it, it's a big problem. I see, which I'll touch it, touch on with this new reserve, Johnson Ranch subdivision on that topic, but we got to look at what our growth policy is back in twenty seventeen, what numbers we hit in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two during COVID, how have we expanded, how have we adapted to expand, and what are we going to do with it? Bozeman's a perfect example. I've brought it up before. Similar boat, they're about five years ahead of us from what I'm seeing, and they expand, 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 and it's becoming a really, really big and scary problem because they don't have the infrastructure to take care of all the homes or the people that are there. Joe, just today, I was coming back from Whitefish. I was telling Sam earlier that it took me forty-five minutes to go from Whitefish Lodge to the west side of Kalispell at four o'clock in the afternoon in the middle of summer. Now, we could say, oh, well, there's a music festival. There's big events, but the bottom line is our infrastructure can't handle it, and we need to work with the state. And I know the state's hard to work with, but we need to figure out what we need to do before we expand. We need to fix what we have before we expand, and I'll reiterate that over and over again during my campaign. I want to cut red tape for our business owners. I think many of you can do this now and not in a year, but one of the main topics that I was planning on speaking on tonight is how hard it is for a business owner to open a business within the city of Kalispell without having a million dollars in their pocket. And I'm not exaggerating that. I just had a client rezone or change use, excuse me, of a building, and they made, they wanted him to move his meter pit, or move his meter outside, which is standard regulation to have your meter pit now, on an existing building that's been there for a hundred years. Add landscaping, move fences, add additional parking, change where parking was, change the approach on a state road, change the sidewalk. And I added up the totals and what my company has billed him for this stuff, and I added up the totals that he told me he has spent to get to where I'm at on the job. It was close to a million dollars. Now, as a small business owner in Kalispell, that scares me a lot. Now, my business, I don't necessarily use a downtown office building, but for somebody wanting to start that boutique or that coffee shop or that restaurant, that is a crazy, absurd number that we are making people jump through, all to, quote, "bring it to the current regulations." Our city's never, nothing's ever perfect. Our city's been here for a hundred years. It's why people move here. We all love it. So when is enough permits, enough drawings on paper, engineers, architects, landscape design people? When's enough going to be enough? I hundred percent agree with it. With a new building, a new build, I get it. You want to see what it looks like. You want to be sure it's done right. But for an existing building, a new business moving in, that would deter me. I wouldn't want to move into the city of Kalispell. And that brings me into a very small, yet important topic regarding that. And I came across it the other day dealing with the Parks and Recs Department, that our city back in twenty eleven dictated that all commercial landscape jobs cannot have any rock on the job unless it is used as an accent feature or an area that collects water. The supposed reason behind this? Well, we don't want rocks in the road. Oh, we don't want rocks on the sidewalk. It's private property. It's not in the right of way. It's not in a boulevard. Private property. You go up to Costco, rock. Chick-fil-A twenty sixteen, rock. A new building, a, a bank downtown just redid their landscape, and it's all rock. Rock is a one and done. Sure, mulch looks beautiful. Looks great for a year, but you have to go back and remulch it every year. Businesses don't do that, and we know that. So we need to cut the red tape, cut the regulation on that. The gentleman before me also spoke on, on grass not being mowed, and I wish he was here for the meeting you guys had about the code inspection deal, but I'm not going to complain about somebody not mowing their yard. I might in my head, but I'm not going to complain about it. It's not, not my say. I'm not that person. Maybe that person's ill. Maybe they're elder. They can't get to it. I want to help people. But invasive weeds are a major, major problem in Montana. The most important, part one that I learned in agriculture education was spotted knappweed. And the county has rules on it. The state has rules on it. You have to get rid of it. And it's not the only invasive weed that you have to take care of, but we have to do something within our city. We have a lot of vacant lots. We have a lot of yards that aren't maintained that get these invasive weeds in. And I'm not saying go find people. Yards that aren't maintained that get these invasive weeds in and I'm not saying go find people. But we need to create a program of some sort that. You know, educates people, hey, this is invasive. We need to get rid of it. We need to control it. Because it's getting really bad. I don't know if you guys noticed the spring dandelions. Technically an invasive weed everywhere you go in the city. Everywhere. And. It's hard to control. They're easy plants to get rid of. But it's now become a problem. Where the people who want to maintain their yard or our city personnel who are maintaining our parks can't control it. Because we don't want to go necessarily spray spray. Around a school when kids are in session. As parents all get worried. So we need to look into that and and creating a program for that as well. And then last I'll touch on this before we go into the. Johnson Ranch deal, which I'll touch on later in that segment tonight, but. Your. Website. The young gal that spoke. Yeah. She said, well, I did hours of digging to find documents, to find minutes, to find what. Regulations and it's true because I've been scouring the city of Kalispell's website. For planning and zoning. Ordinances, laws. City council minutes, agendas. New subdivisions, old subdivisions. And if you know how to operate it and you've been operating it for the last ten years, sure, you might find it right away. But it is a very complex website. That doesn't work very well. It's ten years behind. And it doesn't provide that. It really doesn't provide much info to our community and we need to bridge that gap between community, between our community members and our council and our community members and public works or city planning. You can always find the use fees and you can always find the documents to submit a. A work permit. But. You you can't find regulation. Within the website without really digging deep into it. Hell, I was on my computer for two hours before this meeting looking at the. Twenty seventeen. Plan. And I was trying to find info on the newest plan. There's nothing on there that says the newest plan. Sam and I had a conversation the other day and he said, well, we've interacted with community members on trying to get people out to talk about the, you know. The new plan and everything. I saw one post in the last month. And that's because I follow. If you're fifty plus, probably not on Instagram or Facebook as much as as young people. I'm on it because I run a business and I'm always interacting with people. But I don't have all day with my business to sit there and search for these things. We need to bridge that gap. We need to make that info publicly available, quick and easy. All it takes is one post a week. Hey, city of Kalispell, we're working on this new planning that state's requiring us to do. Come interact with us. Here's our set of dates listed. Put a sign on the door at the front door of city hall. Again, if you're not paying attention to everything that you guys do. People don't know. And that's something that I will change come into city council, but I hope that you guys can change it now. Before I even get in. So. Thank you guys very much and I'll speak with you shortly.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Malia Sturgis. And I need to provide public notice to Kalispell City Council. This is in accordance with the USCS Rules of Civil Procedures as well as Rule seventeen and Rule twenty of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has the overarching requirements that every state must follow. I don't think anyone here will deny that. The states cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution. Clause one of Amendment five to the United States Constitution says, no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or grand jury. However, the state of Montana has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits the prosecuting attorney or police officer to charge by information, not by indictment. And that is unlawful. An emolument violation is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. One is Article one, section ten, where it says that no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation. Of contracts. Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under contract, a contract to perform that's based on the oath or affirmation that they took. Contract parameters are defined within the Constitution of the United States. When the state enacts a law that directs their agents to disobey the law, the Constitution of the United States, that would be a violation of Article one, section ten. Now, the fourteenth amendment is also the other place that you will find the reinforcement of this issue. And that is where it says that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of the United States are at a minimum. Those enumerated within the Bill of Rights and the first ten amendments, they cannot be impaired unless the state of Montana has enacted. In its inferior constitution that is permitting public officials and law enforcement whom you all pay. To violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of Montana illegally and unconstitutionally. Tonawa Downing is litigating this issue at the United States Supreme Court and I am here to notify you that if you continue to pay. Public officials to break the law, there can be criminal sanctions that would come from that. We don't want to go down that path, but officials must be made aware of being be made aware that people. That paying people to disobey the law is an emolument violation. It is illegal and it is unconstitutional. So I am asking you honorable people of Kalispell City Council. To please look at clause one of Amendment five and confirm that what I am saying to be true. And then direct your public officials to act in a lawful constitutional manner, consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. And I do have a notice that I would like to present is that. All right. Well, thank you guys and God bless.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carson Russell and I am one of the many civil rights advocates Mr. Sturgis just mentioned. The reason I'm standing before you now is to urge each one of you to take a serious and personal look at the fifth amendment of the United States Constitution. And confirm what we're saying to be true. Then ask, are your agents acting lawfully and constitutionally as they are obligated to under their oaths? This is not a small issue. This is a very serious matter. As of now, we've we've already served notice to the Montana Attorney General and Montana Supreme Court justices. We are fully prepared to bring these issues to the United States Supreme Court if necessary. What we're dealing with is a prima facie per se crime. When public officials rely on an inferior state statute to deprive a person of a constitutional right. That alone constitutes a federal crime. That crime is defined in Title eighteen USC subsection two forty two. Deprivation of rights under color of law. That law says anyone who under color of law deprives someone of their federally protected rights commits a felony. And because they swore an oath to uphold the Constitution, we don't have to prove intent. The breach alone completes the offense. Their willfulness is established the moment they break the promise made under oath. That's the legal foundation of perjury. Now, why are we here talking to you? We don't want to get anybody in trouble. Because you fund these officials, your police are violating due process and holding people unlawfully. You're paying for it. That opens you up to liability under conspiracy law. Under Title forty two, if a person has knowledge of these violations, has the power to prevent them and fails to act, they can be held personally responsible. That means city officials, council members, administrators, anyone in the position to intervene can be held to the same. We're delivering formal notice and asking you to correct these violations now before further litigation is necessary. This is the least destructive path forward. We have confirmation from individuals like Cash Patel FBI that any state judge or official who violates federal law is subject to arrest. We're asking you, let's fix this together. Let's restore the constitutional order. I'll remain here until this meeting concludes. And I hope you understand the seriousness of what's been brought to your attention today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other general public comment? None. We're going to close that. We're going to move on to the public hearing this this evening. This is for the Reserve at Johnson Ranch Growth Policy Amendment. Council will accept comments on council's intent to adopt, revise, or reject a proposed amendment to the Kalispell Growth Policy to create a neighborhood business. And high density residential note at the northwest corner of Old Reserve Drive in Stillwater Road and property located at ten fifty three Stillwater Road. Now, open the public hearing and accept comments now on that proposal.
My name is Claire and I live in West Valley. I want you to deny this. Due to the fact of like people prior to me, the speeding, nobody paying attention. Just like our county commissioners did, they did not agree to increase our policeman's salary, but they turned around and gave their own sales a raise. Is the city council doing the same thing because we cannot maintain police officers to help us anymore? You have a high school at that intersection. Nobody goes at thirty five miles an hour through there. We cannot get police officers out there to help because they're someplace else. We had a young lady killed in two thousand and six there at that intersection by a gravel truck. Two weeks later, we had another accident. That young gentleman survived it. And in regards to. Letting people know in this county of what's going on, you wait till the last minute. You put it in the paper this morning that you have in the meeting tonight. A lot of people don't have access to computers so they can't get on there. And see what's going on. People don't want cell phones. Your older generation could care less. So we rely on people like you and the county commissioners to inform people and we are not being informed. As far as grocery stores in that complex, is it so hard to go across ninety three? You've got Target, you've got Walmart, you've got two convenience store, you have got Zip trip. You have got a town pump. So why is it necessary? And when Costco moves out, Winko is taking their building. So why is it necessary to add added congestion to this area? What you're going to do is going to cause more death, more tragedies and it's going to be. I will hold y'all accountable if anybody gets killed. At this intersection. I have had enough. Something needs to be done. When you go and let all these big people come in here with all the money. You're causing problems like the warming center, just like you did with the outlaw in. You closed it down because of big money and then where did those people go? I had a family that I've known for years. That had to go to Spokane to find a home to live. The three of them were born and raised here in Kalispell along with their parents. You always said that you wanted people to visit the downtown Kalispell, but now in this article, you're trying to avert. The congestion in downtown away. So you want to put it where it's already congested. And you know, we've got too much going on. Nobody will help us on farm to market. We have got motorcycles out there riding three wide going north of Church Drive as a race. This is going to be the same thing at Stillwater and Reserve. What about all the kids in that school? They get out on those fields, you get people racing through there. You're going to be held accountable for any any high school kids' death. You know, this is not right that you keep shoving this down our throat because of money. You need to start taking care of the people that have lived here forever. You're chewing up all the farmland. You're taking away the wheat, the hay to feed animals, to feed people. You're running hep farms now. Are you going to continue to order your food from China? Like we get now, this is getting ridiculous and it needs to stop. I had the MDT lie to me about speed limit signs on farm to market. I've been out there almost forty years. There was never a speed limit sign north of Church Drive. At farm to market nor going south of Church Drive on farm to market. It took me going to people and making contacts to get signs up. And they put signs up that were dated two thousand and nine and tried to tell me they'd been there forever. And that was a lie. I'm tired of being lied to by county officials, by city officials doing what they're doing. I ended up because of a car accident in my driveway where a gentleman, a young kid was playing with his DVD player. In his car getting his music. A head on collision in my driveway. A gentleman with an open femur fracture. Almost died there. If it wasn't for me at the time being a CNA, that gentleman would have died in my driveway. Because of speeding and not going on intention and that's why I ended up being a firefighter. I'm retired now. I worked eighteen years teaching paramedics. And I end up working for the state medical examiner. This has to stop. How many more people do you want to kill? Because of your construction and your greed and wanting to get all this done. So that you guys can get higher salaries and you're putting more people on the streets because they cannot afford these homes. Some people still make eight dollars and seventy five cents here in an hour. Can they afford fourteen, fifteen, twenty four hundred dollars a month rent for your so called low income housing? The answer is no. So if you want to pay attention to something, build. A home for these people so they're not on the streets. So they can live in a place so they can get a job so they can take care of their families. You guys all have homes. You work, you get paid from us. What about taking care of the people below you that you feel? Are nothing but dirt and that's the way I feel about it. And you need to go in, like I said, you need to let the people know ahead of time about these meetings to put it in the paper. In the morning that you're having a meeting tonight at seven o'clock. That's wrong. That's disrespectful to the people that live in your community. You got gravel pits and everything north of the subdivision that you want to put in there. Like I said, we've had gravel trucks kill young girl. We had another one hit two weeks later. You've got two gravel pits up there. You've got processing plants and everything. What are you going to do with all that? And then you have all the logging coming down farm to market that gets on reserve to go to winehouse over here. So how are you going to handle the traffic? You don't have the police officer because you don't want to pay them what they're worth. They've got targets on their back. I've got a drug facility and gun run or south of me that nobody will take care of. So you know, when is it going to stop and when are you going to actually start working for the people in this valley? Whether it be city or counts or the county. It's ridiculous what's going on for money. We are turning into a California. Is what the city is doing and the county. Because you're letting everybody come in here. Oh, we're building low income housing. That's BS and you know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm George Waters and I live at seven seven four Harvest Few Lane. First of all, very, very good comments about the subdivision. That's something I really disagree with. In looking at the paper this morning and reading it, uh, one sentence, couple sentences really caught me off guard. The subdivision would include commercial space and small shops to serve the neighborhood and divert traffic from other business areas around the city. Well, to divert traffic to Stillwater Drive is not a great idea. The areas that we have commercial, whether it's ninety-three, whether it's Idaho, whether it's Meridian, those are the areas that should have the commercial, not Stillwater. The average person probably drives forty-five to fifty miles an hour down Stillwater. It's common. It's very common. And I drive down it every day and I'm really aware of my speed, but I have cars that pass me up. In addition, all the gravel trucks. It's a sm- as you all know, it's a small two-lane road. How can you build, what, three hundred houses and a commercial area, whether it's a market, shops? How can you put it in that area with that small, narrow of a road? It just doesn't make sense. It seems to me that it'd be very, very dangerous. The high schools there, exactly like the lady said, the high schools there. You see the kids coming out of the driveway after school and they're all, they're all speeding. Every one of them speeding, trying to get across there. Between that, the gravel trucks, and now you're gonna have potentially a couple hundred houses? It just doesn't make sense. It's very unsafe. And unfortunately, that beautiful area, that hill there, it's gonna go away. And the people up above, I feel sorry for them because they're gonna see nothing but roofs. They have a market there and shops. It's just not the right area. It should all stay in the commercial areas around town, and it shouldn't be spread out to that area. It's a very, very bad idea. And I know many of the neighbors that I talked with, I haven't found one that agreed with it at all. Every one of them says it's not the area to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bob White, uh, live at forty-five hundred Farm to Market Road. Mayor and council members, thanks for the opportunity to come here and address the Johnson Ranch Development Proposal. I've lived most of my life in the valley and grew up on Stillwater Road, uh, where, very near where this development's proposed. Johnsons are lifelong neighbors and friends. They're honorable members of the community. Uh, I don't deny them or others the opportunity to pursue the value of their property. Likewise, I don't argue with the high density, um, the above-average density of the plan. In a growing community, we're faced with either accepting, uh, higher-density development or uncontrolled urban sprawl. That being said, uh, there is an old saying in the planning world that a camel is a quarter horse built with a lack of planning. We can't overlook the very real consequences of this proposed high-density development and the related safety issues and economic costs to the, to the community. These impacts include the lack of community planning, and I mean the interaction between county and city, that reconciles the current industrial use of this area with the proposed future growth of high-density residential. The current county designation of gravel and mining on Stillwater Road, combined with high-density residential proposes significant health risks. Some of those have already been discussed, and there were real-life consequences to some young, young individuals and families in this community. Traffic and infrastructure is a major issue out there, especially given the limited age of roads, you know, the limited and aged roads, including two ninety-degree turns consecutive on Stillwater. I grew up out there. The Johnson family knows this better than anything because Vernon would spend good part of the weekends or weekdays on a winter day pulling people out of the ditch on those two corners. I've done it myself. Have been run off the road by a gravel truck. You know, this is just gonna complicate issues even worse. We have an infrastructure problem that you are all very, very aware of. But slamming five hundred living units into an already desperately underdeveloped uh, infrastructure areas recipe for disaster. Stillwater Road's already a default commercial bypass. Uh, adding high-density residential is a recipe, recipe for disaster, as I said. We also need to address the impact on schools and emergency services. Without reasonable impact fees to address the added cost of the future services, we're gonna run into the same issue that we already have out, uh, um, West Valley. This is especially true given the lack of appetite for increased real estate taxes to pay for existing schools, not to mention expansion of schools to meet future demand. It's a five hundred and some odd page proposal, so I, I apologize. I haven't been through and read of your page, but I did not see any mention of affordable housing. Housing to provide for the people who provide for the services for homeowners. Uh, without action in these areas, we place the future of our community in the hands of developers at the expense of those who will live here long after the development's sold. Uh, otherwise, a fear that we're gonna be stuck with a camel on Stillwater Road, and I appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Can I all speak again? Again, my name's Colvoilander, candidate for Ward Three. I'm against this subdivision. I'll just say it flat out. I'm not gonna deny it. I've been against major subdivisions in the past. You guys have heard my concerns. They're all the same concerns you guys have heard before. I'm disappointed in what the decision made on Tronstad. That was really upsetting to me. I was actually over there the other day, um, driving down the road and it's, you know, it's summertime, we're busy. And, uh, I saw probably about thirty cars go up and down that road, including myself, that don't live in the area to avoid high-density traffic. And we're seeing the same thing at Stillwater Road. And you may think, well, we're on the corner of the city, we have a nice school there, we got a roundabout, we got DNRC, we have the Forest Service, we got new apartments, no biggie. And what I'm saying isn't don't build. What I'm saying is let's be smart about it. And incorporating this into the city is not the right plan. I get it. We want the tax dollars. My concern, I, I have safety concerns and I, and I have dollar value concerns. And one of my concerns with this ultra-development plan that we have in place right now across the city is if you look at Silverbrook, it's a prime example. I wasn't knee-high to a grasshopper when that started, but when it did start, they built out the roads. They put in the water, they put in the sewer, they put in the drains. And the market crashed. Now, we don't have control over the market. But you had foundations of homes left there for years. Empty lots. You might go, well, that's not that big a deal. It just didn't get developed. Well, developer paid to put it in. Who's maintaining it? All of us who live in another area of the city because you're not pulling that revenue from those new homes. It's finally getting built out, or it probably is paying for itself. I don't know the numbers exactly in my head. And it's getting there, but it's twenty twenty-five. The recession was two thousand and eight. That's a long, long time. You approved the Tronstad. Obviously, they're farming it this year. I saw them do soil test over the winter. Is that gonna be built out next year? Is the light gonna be put in next year? I should answer that. No. We know the state's not gonna put it in next year. But we're approving it. So we're gonna approve this high-density area to build ho- more homes, more lots. When we have, I don't know, how many, uh, areas have we approved this year? Ten, fifteen, twenty? Well, those haven't been built on. We have existing areas inside the city limits that haven't been built on. Just the other week, we were talking about apartment, an apartment building being built by the air, uh, city airport in a subdivision that has one way in and one way out. You can't get off at the bypass there. All the traffic has to go down to the bottom or through the west side of town. I see, I see the, in my district, I see the residual from it. I see the accidents happen. High school kids are gonna speed no matter what. We can talk about speeding all day long. But when are we gonna get smart about this? When are we gonna say, hey, we need to put a pause? We're not saying no, but we need to put a pause on this. The gentleman before me spoke about dump tr- or, uh, the lady and gentleman spoke about the rock yards and the dump trucks. I haul frequently every day all around the valley. I go through there at least once a week to go to Cutting Edge or LHC. I hardly ever see a truck get off at Old Reserve, get off the bypass and, and go through the round, or go by the school. They usually come down four mile, go by the Forest Service, and then into the pit. I've seen city dump trucks. I've seen private. Heck, I've even seen whitefish pull in there sometimes. We can blame speeding. We go, well, that's an effect of driving people's speed. But the bottom line is it's, it's a bad area. It's not fit for housing. Over in Spokane, there's a pit called the Perry Street Quarry. Similar situation. It's kind of like Highway ninety-three. And on either side, you have mass, massive housing subdivisions. I mean, you have apartments that are, God, there has to be a, a thousand apartment units in those buildings. A quarter mile off the highway is the pit. And I'm going, well, this is interesting, pulling in there. Got this big old wide road that's wider than Main Street here in Kalispell. And there's three big old signs. No Jake Brake. What's a Jake Brake do? Slows the truck down. You don't use a Jake Brake, that truck will go through your house. It's like using no tra- and not having trailer brakes. Now try that with a eighty-thousand-pound load behind you. And I don't, I know that people who li- I know people who live in that neighborhood that's existing, and they listen trucks all day long. I love Jake Brakes because that's who I am, but I don't wanna listen to it in my backyard. I don't. It's not why somebody moves to Kalispell. We have the school right there. We have West Valley School. Um, both the peoples who spoke ahead of me live in West Valley. I agree with them. I- i- it's a danger. I served on West Valley. I've seen the accidents. I've seen high school kids. I've seen adults get hit. And those memories are right here. They never go away. And I will tell you, majority of my accidents that I have responded to with that department were right on the border of city limits. Ford, thirty-car accident, foggy day before the light was put in. How long did it take to put that in? Stillwater. Kids rushing to get back to school, spins out, goes off in the ditch, or i- down into a farmer's field, excuse me. It's a forty-foot drop. I'm not saying we're responsible for their actions, but we need to think about what's there. On the school topic, that sub, uh, subdivision that's there. The school is districted to West Valley School. West Valley School has been struggling with teachers, bus drivers. I've know, I actually know a parent that was in that district. And they specifically, after six months of being there, they, they have three kids. They said, we gotta get our kids back to Elrod or, or Peterson. And so they moved. They, they rent, and they, they found a house closer in district to move, to get their kids back to the school. Because West Valley was so overloaded, their kids couldn't get the education that they felt they needed. So we're gonna go cram more homes in, overload the school, overload the road, put more people in danger, overload our first responders, because we know West Valley ain't responding to that. City Kalispel. Well, there's fire department down the road. That's what the spec sheet's gonna say. Do they have the call volume? Do they have this, the force for it? No. My district's on the west side. Constantly, we have ambulances coming from the north station, which again, depends where you are on a call. But if everybody's home, that ambulance should come from the south station if it's going to the west side. Should be the closest station to respond. Low-income housing, I don't know if it's necessarily the answer we need for Kalispel. But what I am, I have seen throughout my district and throughout the city, uh, the valley itself, majority of low-income housing that's needed is for our senior citizens. It's for people who are retired. I have a neighbor who's in a wheelchair. He lives on basically social security. And he, he rents from a friend who owns the property, and he says, I can't afford my rent because we keep upping everything. He says, I, you owe my vote. There's, there's no doubt in, in his mind. But he said, he, he said to me, he goes, give it two more years, I probably won't be able to afford to live here. Where does he go? You're gonna throw him in a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house? No. He's already in a hundred-and-twenty-year-old home, almost. He's stuck. Next thing you know, he's not affording food. That's what really, really, really scares me. I get it, we're growing, but let's be smart about this. Let's work with what we have. Slow down and think. There's seven hundred and five listings on the market right now, as of today. I just pulled that stat up. And thirty-one new homes in the city of Kalispel. We don't need more homes. We have them. They're right here. They're already being built or planned to be built. On top of that, we're gonna throw in commercial use now. And we have Reserve Drive that can't be expanded because of irrigation ditches and drainage ditches. It's plowed by the state, I believe. State-maintained. So there's nothing the city, Kalispel's really gonna do, other than say, alright, you can't build till the state fixes the road. And we know the state's deal. We're not gonna do it till it warrants it. What warrants it? A death? Fifty accidents? What does that? This is quoted from Ryan Hunter's website. That he voted against developments that sprawl into our rural areas or encroach on river and wetland habitat. Now, for those of you who agree with him, say, that's a good quote. I would agree with that. And I probably disagree with a lot of things he says. But I agree with that. We keep pushing and pushing and pushing farther out. I get it. Farmers are retiring. They wanna sell their land. They wanna make as much money as we can. There's housing options that are not mass development, that don't put our strain on our systems, don't put a strain on our city if they are truly needed. Again, people move here for the area we live in. They don't move here to sit, to live next to a pit or live in an apartment. The new grain silos, drive by them every day. The new grain silos, drive by them every day. They're half-empty. Why are they half-empty? Because people can't afford them. They don't want to live in an apartment. But let's just keep expanding because the numbers say we need to. So, I appreciate you guys' time and I look forward to working with city council. I hope that I get to work with you guys prior to hopefully being elected into office and God bless you all.
Thanks, sir. Uh, we'll let you go once, we'll have in, in two weeks, we'll be back here again. When this is, if you could, otherwise, next thing you know, I've got everyone doing it. And so. Any other comments for the public hearing? We're going to close the public hearing, it'll be on the agenda two weeks.
August fourth.
August fourth, okay. All right.
At seven PM in these council chambers.
Got it. Yeah, city manager report.
Uh, not allowed to report on, Doug Russell will be back, apologize. Doug Russell will be back in office on Wednesday. The next council meeting will be a work session where we'll discuss the Northwest Montana History Museum's request to purchase the building and the renaming of Kid Sports will be on the agenda at this time. But other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay. Anything from council? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I have two comments. First one is, I just want to put it out there, and this is easy to find in public records or whatever, but your city council members make five thousand dollars per year before tax. So, I, I just want you to know, this isn't a service that we do because it makes us a lot of money, it's a love of our community. I have a lot of stuff I was going to talk about with developments, but we'll, I'll skip that for now. But I really wanted to talk you about is the advantage of you shopping locally at locally-owned businesses versus like the box stores. And a little fact here, studies have indicated that about thirteen-point-six percent of revenue from big box stores recirculates locally. As opposed to independent businesses that return forty-six-point-nine percent toward, to the community. So, I know some things are a little bit more expensive and it's a little bit more inconvenient that you can't get everything at one place. But the local businesses that we have here, our entrepreneurs actually keep the local economy running and they do way more than the big box stores do for our long-lasting economy. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Graham?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I guess what I wanted to touch on is just, you know, there's, seems to be a little bit back and forth going here and hopefully I'll just maybe go and say again, for, I don't know how the, how many a time that individuals do still have the ability to drop their mail, their ballot off individually and in person at the election office, so that is still a possibility for people to do. Should they choose to do that, that's what I would do. That is what I do. So that, that has not been taken away from anybody to be able to do that. The other aspect about, you know, how we notice people, and actually I was going to ask Jared, for our meeting for planning board, and then I guess pop, probably maybe it's, it's probably the same for city council, but for planning board, it's a two-week notice, is not?
Correct.
So, every person in this room that has gone through and talked about notices should call city clerk and get on our mailing. Because you can get every email that we go and we send out for all the notices so that every indivi, individual, every individual knows exactly what we're doing.
I would add in as particular one, we also had work sessions at Planning Commission as well.
Oh, yeah, it's like you said, it's a multi-step process where it starts at the planning board, rolls uphill to us.
And, and regarding the land use plan, there is an Engage Kalispell website that is particular to the land use plan and there's links to that directly on the planning page and have also gone out in our city pages. So, yes, and the Engage Kalispell page has all the meetings that we've held, all the open houses we've held. It has updates what land use plan is and obviously we're in the office daily.
We're in the tenth work session for the three-eight-two, which by the way, three-eight-two, I'm really glad you guys are here for this process because three-eight-two, is it for public hearing too? It's for public hearing for, would that affect this?
In some instances, would this particular one wouldn't because it includes an annexation and initial zoning? But if it were already in the city, then, and there was just a subdivision involved, it would not include this process.
We would not be doing this because of three-eight-two. So, again, I'll use this as my stool to stand on, look at three-eight-two because it's a big deal for everybody in the city. To answer, uh, in, I, I see the gentleman left from the Meridian aspect of it, area of town. Yeah, our police officers, they get, they get raises. We do not, as a city council, for how long has it been?
Twelve years.
It's been a long time. We do not give ourselves raises. We aren't in this for the money and we surely do not go through and pass subdivisions based off of tax revenue. I know that we have something in our pa, in our, on our, our memo for certain portions of it that goes and has a scope of services analysis to go through and make sure that we're not paying in and subsidizing. But it's not about tax revenue and probably more so, there is a break point where the more expensive stuff comes through and takes care of the lower stuff, so there's a balance there, but. I think that's, that's pretty much all I have. I just, you know, sometimes when you have public comment and it, it bounces in so many different directions, kind of the response is kind of bouncing around in different directions as well, but. Anyhow, I'm glad to see everybody here for public comment though, sounds good.
Anything? Anything?
Nope.
Okay. I'm going to adjourn the meeting.